Hello.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Hello.
Hello.
Hi. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes.
How's everyone doing?
Good evening.
Is that Van?
Yes, how are you ma'am?
Pretty good, how about you?
Good.
Hi Fran.
Hi Gary, how's it going?
Good Francesca, how are you?
Pretty good, sorry I was on.
No worries. Be here.
Hello, Mr. Perrin. Am I muted or are you?
I am, how are you Mr. McCarthy?
Good to see you, very good.
Good to be seen, I apologize for my error in scheduling last meeting.
It happens. I had a meeting that were back to back the other day and we were waiting for the second meeting to start and I canceled out of it and couldn't get back on, so. It's not always.
Becoming somewhat of a Zoom expert at this point with my life.
Everything Zoom.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, you're on the Zoom, you're on the video, good to see you.
I am, I. I was forced to get on the Zoom world of last four weeks with business. Had to download onto my computer, so welcome to 2020 for me.
You know, I kind of like it though, because you know.
I do, it does save a lot of time.
It is.
Does save a lot of time and you know, sometimes I'll travel an hour and a half for a 15 minute meeting.
Exactly, yeah.
Doesn't make any sense, you know.
Yep.
Although the traffic is much lighter still, so. I still have a handful of guys that like that, like that meeting because they, you know, you gotta bring them their lunch. Everyone wants something for free.
You never brought us lunch at the meeting or dinner, I mean.
Well, you know what, now that I think of it, we'll maybe do a hot potluck, potluck dinner or something.
Sounds good, alright. We're on it. First, we'll celebrate the first in-person meeting, which might be coming up soon now that the school convenience city.
Yeah, I'm hopeful, I mean, we can certainly plenty of room in there.
Right, right.
Yeah, they put some of the desks in the back behind where the, where the crowd sits.
Oh yeah.
And Fran, any word, Fran, any word on that?
Um, no updates right now. We haven't heard. I'll let you know, you'll be the first to know.
Okay.
Sounds like a Bill Belichick answer.
It did sound like it, that's what I heard. She's been taking lessons.
But hey, good for her, she comes from great stock.
So we're into fall almost, it feels like it.
Yeah, it's a.
All those people.
Not very welcoming, I can tell you that.
Yeah. It was a nice summer.
It was a great summer. Fall's always nice too, we still have a little more time before the snow applies.
We hope.
Hope is all we have Dennis.
Oh yeah. Nice agenda tonight.
A lot, yeah.
Oh, it seems as we. Have a couple petitioners with the same representative, so that may, from the Zoom control standpoint.
Simplifying things.
Yeah.
I see the planning board is on LTC right now, are they, I think.
Yes, they are.
Okay, that's strange.
I thought we would take precedent over them.
Also too Fran.
Yeah.
Maybe they have a bigger project.
Public address, isn't it?
Speaking of bigger projects, I don't know if you remember the project we approved, 42 wells have by Lowe's over here in the Highlands.
Yeah.
Oh yeah.
Wow.
Yes.
Guys get a chance to tour it, it is tremendous.
Actually, I drove by it the other day, it actually looks really, really nice.
The courtyard in the center, a gas pit, it's got trucks, it's gorgeous, they got, they're gonna probably be completely open in another couple of weeks, but they've, they've got rooms right now, or apartments they're renting, but the garage came up great, very nice, very, very nice. Nice to see them.
Yeah, you know what, it fits a night off, it fits a nice tour off the connector, it doesn't, you know.
Yep.
It doesn't take up too much, they left, they left some nice trees for some privacy, they did, they did a good job on my side as well, I do, I was down there about a month and a half, two months ago, prior to, during the final construction piece.
What a, what a great site. It's a good site for that kind of development.
They can fill it with some tax space.
Oh, I think they will, the spaces look amazing. But I don't think they'll have trouble.
That's what we'll need. We have Fran, have you heard from Mark?
I have not, no.
I'm here.
Oh, there he is.
Great.
Did I hear, I think I heard his voice.
Commissioner Brea, reporting for duty.
Perfect.
Oh, good evening, Mr. Brea. I just want to take a quick moment before we go on the air and I want to say hello to George, George, we want to welcome you to the Lower Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you.
We're very excited to have a new member and have different viewpoints brought to the board and the decision-making process for the, for the entire community, so welcome aboard and you'll be a welcomed addition.
Thank you, well, I'm gonna need a lot of handholding and guidance on this here.
Yeah, well, we've all, we've all been through it, don't, don't disallow the fact that everyone's a rookie at one point in their life, but I'm sure the other board members will agree, it's always nice to have a complete board and once we get there, we like to try to stay intact, so.
Thank you.
Everything's developed, you need, you got a great planning development team downtown, so feel free to utilize their, their weirdiness and usefulness and eagerness to move the city forward.
Good, I'm looking forward when I could come into the City Hall and ask those questions.
There you go, yeah. We'll be doing pocket Zoom if we don't, if we don't.
I, I always ask Fran a question, so I'm always not sure of something, so I'm gonna lean on you.
Great. So, I believe I have a clock at 6:30, is that correct Fran?
Yes.
Are you ready to move?
Yeah. Yeah, I believe everyone is online.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we have Van and Mark on a call. And then those of us who have been trained into the 2020 are on the Zoom.
We.
I'm gonna, happy and sad, we're gonna open up our public hearing. Good evening, welcome to the Lower Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for September 14th, 2020, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, our meeting is not in person and we are available on Zoom for call-in.
Chairman, please. Yep. Your presence, Mr. Chairman.
Got to get disconnected. I'm back, I apologize. Alright, I'm back, so let's move forward under continued business. Those first in attendance with Zoom, Francesca Sigliano will control the meeting, help you to mute if you're not speaking, as another Zoom decorum, and kindly not deal with phone calls and the like, I know it's difficult. Gonna move forward under continued business, we have ZB 2020-31, variances, Kenneth Laney, care of MacJack LLC, is 56 Hildreth Street, 161 Jewett Street, section 5.1, MacJack 7 LLC is seeking variance approval to modify the existing lots, raise the existing garage building and construct two family homes at 56 Hildreth Street and 161 Jewett, both lots are the traditional single, three, single neighborhood TF, of zoning district, the proposed requires variance approval under section 5.1, the minimum lot width, minimum frontage, minimum front yard setback and for any other relief required on lower zoning elements, is the petitioner here with us?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Kenneth Laney of Cornerstone Land Associates, representing the applicant MacJack LLC this evening, how are you?
How are you?
Excellent, Mr. Chairman, at our last hearing, there was some concern over the specific information submitted under the application, so in the time since the last hearing, we've done some plan revisions, we've provided some dwelling plans, rendering and floor plans, as well as I've marked up a kind of a color rendering to show the board exactly the separation between landscaping and, and existing trees and pavement and dwelling, so that hopefully gives the board a better idea of what's happening out there on the existing site, as I did, Mr. McCarthy had pointed out with all the vegetation out there and the trees, it's got the kind of picture in your mind where these dwellings might be situated, so what we did is we added the surveyed information for the parking lot that is located to both the south and the east of the two proposed lots, as well as showed the driveway area to the north and to the west of the two proposed lots that's associated with the dwelling at 165, 167 Jewett Street. In addition to that, we've modified the plans so that the dwellings represent the layout of the floor plans and the renderings that were provided, they are the exact size and the exact location of where they'll be constructed, and also just wanted to reiterate that there, you know, was some question as to whether or not this was going to be constructed and the plan again is to have these constructed beginning this year and hopefully having them completed and ready for sale come early spring. I did receive feedback from the engineering department from Ms. Sigliano earlier in the afternoon today. One of the comments from the engineering department, Mr. Chairman, was to add dimensions to the driveway so that we could ensure that it was meeting the requirements for the setbacks and size of a parking vehicle, I have done that and as you can see here, we've showed that the driveway to the right side of the house is 11 feet, it is 36 feet in length and it is three feet off of the property line and off of the dwelling for an eight-foot by 18-foot stacked parking area for two vehicles. Now, what might be noticed or not noticed about that parking area and the drive aisle is the existing road on Hildreth Street was just completely redone for sidewalks, curbing and pavement, Mr. Chairman, and as a result, I think of the city potentially thinking that this lot was part of the 50 Hampshire Street lot, they actually created a curb cut there between the two roundings of the vertical granite curbing measuring 25 feet in width. Now, obviously, we don't want to, I guess, miss or, or not obtain a variance that's required, but I don't think it would be in anybody's interest to modify that newly created curb cut that the city just completed to size it down and make it 15 feet, so I did let Ms. Sigliano know that if we needed to obtain that extra variance, that's something that I wanted to bring up this evening. But again, you know, our hope is to just have the single driveway for the single-family dwelling, no variance is needed for Lot 1, meets all the sizing requirements for setbacks, dwelling location and usable open space. Taking up the property at Lot 2, the fencing was shown on the existing condition as well as there's some retaining walls to the north and then a small retaining wall on the existing parcel, and as you can see is we've provided a single 15-foot wide, one-lane driveway that will hold two vehicles stacked, which is what meets the requirement, a sidewalk would then lead to the front porch for the single-family dwelling with a side yard also containing the required usable open space, so we're hoping that all these additions that we've provided and the additional information that we provided would clear up some of your questions and allow us to move forward with this application this evening, if you have any questions additionally, please let me know.
Thank you very much, and we do appreciate the, the information as far as the sidewalk and the curb cut that the city has installed, so to speak, is, is part of the record and we'll have that conversation resolved, that's part of this, so we can bring it in under any other release required. With that being said, I'd like to open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor, that portion of public hearing is now closed, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, that portion of public hearing is now closed, like to open up to the board, Van?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Ms. Laney, thank you sir for the updated information and the site plan and the rendering, and, and I agree with you that I think everything is conforming and in terms of like the driveway and the pavement and all that, I, I don't think we will need to do any more kind of renovation or pavement since it's recently renovated, so I think, I think this project I can support, so I wish you the best luck, Ms. Laney, uh, thank you.
Thank you Van, Sean?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with Van, so thank you, Ms. Laney, for providing the updated renderings and the updated site plan that shows us the layout of the driveways, I think that was the main concern, layouts of the properties would be, how they were gonna be laid out, would have any effect on possibly. Any other encroachments onto any other parts of the property that would require any type of variances, but. Used to put together a nice project here again, as always, and I think it's something that I would be agreeable to, so.
Thank you Sean, Dennis?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions, but I agree with my fellow board members that. This second day, the difference between the presentation two weeks ago and today, we really have the material, I think, we need to put together a decision here on this, on these variances, but the colored site plan doesn't indicate landscaping, just indicates green area, unless I'm missing something, is that correct? Kids and shrubs indicated.
That is correct, Mr. McCarthy, typically what we do is we condition the, I guess, the permits to require a landscaping permit that usually gets done either by the landscaper or the site contractor ahead of time before they get in there and do the final landscaping, they provide it to DPD, DPD, they review it with them and go ahead and, and you know, hopefully signs off on it and they coordinate that, so I typically think that's the way it should go, rather than forcing landscaping to be done without really knowing how many of the trees they're gonna keep out there, how many of the trees that are gonna be left on along that side yard, so I know that there'll always be some type of landscaping around the house, Mr. McCarthy, and if we could condition that as a DPD review before it's provided for a occupancy permit, that would be excellent.
So that, that was one of the proposed conditions that they have in their comments.
That is correct.
I think we should definitely do that, that the applicant submit a landscaping plan prior to applying for the building permit and would work with DPD to develop that, because we do want to see trees in that, on those two sites, I, I think, I know I would like to see trees, I think the neighborhood deserves, and also shrubs, so that would be the, I think the other proposed condition has been taken care of, with the exception of. Decks off the dining space, so if I look at what you presented for floor plans, you have glass doors going out to a element that looks like it could be a small deck, and so I'd like to see you develop, if, if that's the case, or is it going out to a small patio, I'm not sure which.
Yeah, I mean, the anticipation was a small patio, the area is pretty level out there and flat, Mr. McCarthy, I don't foresee these things being built significantly higher out of the ground than the surrounding homes that are around them, and those on typical only have, you know, two or three steps up into the first floor living area.
But that would be hivescape?
Yes, yes sir, yep, it would be a.
Site plans.
It'd be like a paving type of patio.
So my point is that you should, I'd like to see a condition that you update the site plans to show the intent of the hivescape in the areas, patios.
Yeah, we can, we can put that on the landscape, that would probably fit right on the landscape plan, Mr. McCarthy.
I, I think you're right, I think you're right, and I think that what you've done here with the change in the. Building design and the driveway design for the proposed single-family on Lot 2, I think it is.
Yes.
Is, is great, I think that the restraint that you show, not bringing that up forward more than you had to and. Showing less driveway, I think, than you had originally, goes a long way to help that fit in better on that site and minimize the impact that that would have, so I really like what you've done, I think that the information that we have here is great and I'd just like to see those two conditions, if we can go forward here, thank you.
Thank you Dennis, appreciate it, Mark?
Mark Brea speaking, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank Mr. Laney for addressing the concerns expressed by the board at the last meeting, you've certainly done so to my satisfaction and as a result, pending any proposed conditions, I look very favorably upon this petition, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brea. And George, good evening.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Laney, I actually agree with Dennis, because what I wanted to see was some, you know, some green space with the trees and, you know, at least, you know, something that would, you know, kids can be around, so I think the changes you made was, was, was impressive, so thank you very much.
Thank you, George. So, we have two conditions we're looking at, that you're, you're in agreeance with the comments, and, and once again, very well prepared, anytime you're involved in a project, quite frankly, you follow, you follow your guidelines and you work with DPD and, and the petitioners and owners and, you know, it's always, it's always a pleasant process when you're organized and you understand what we're doing here, so we have those two conditions related to landscape, as well as the hivescape to incorporate into one plan, you've agreed with the, and you've read the comments, and any other concerns or comments from the board? None being recognized, Mr. Clark, if you could provide us with the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna include a. I'm going to include a curb cut on that as a variance to it.
Correct, and I believe if we just designate it as any other relief required under this variance, it should be very counsel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so again, Ms. Laniya, so the conditions are number one, to work with DPD on landscaping plan, number two, update the site plan to demonstrate intention of that.
Yes, perfect.
So with that, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2020-31, 56 Hilda Street and 160 Wood Street for various approval under Section 5.1 for minimum lot width, minimum frontage, minimum front yard setback, curb cut to raise an existing garage building and construct it to two single-family residential buildings, one on each lot with the previously mentioned conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. And prior to the vote on the public record, I did review the previous meeting, read all the required documents. That would need the opportunity to move on a vote this evening. May I have a second?
Second motion.
Mark Brier seconds the motion.
Thank you. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve with condition.
Member Peck?
Approve with condition.
Member Callahan?
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approve with conditions.
Member Brier?
Approve with conditions.
Member Proco?
Approve with conditions.
Congratulations, Ms. Laniya, you've been approved of ZB 20-31.
Excellent, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Pleasure, thank you. We're going to move right on to your next position, ZB 2020-32, for variance, Kenneth Laniya, care of JAF 27 LLC, 62 Seneca Street, 32 Chippewa Street, Section 5.1. JAF 27 LLC is seeking variance approval to relocate the lot lines and construct a new single-family home at 33 Chippewa Street, Lot B, a vacant lot that has merged for the purposes of zoning with the existing single-family home at 62 Seneca Street, Lot A. The properties are in the traditional neighborhood, two-family ETF zoning district, and the proposal requires variance approval under Section 5.1 for minimum lot size, minimum lot area per dwelling unit above lots, minimum lot frontage, Lot B, minimum front yard setback for existing home in Lot A, and for any other relief required under lower zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kenneth Laniya, Cornerstone Land Associates, representing the applicant, JAF 27 LLC. We're before you this evening to request a variance to allow for the separation of what was previously three separate lots and, you know, due to the zoning becoming a little bit more stricter as the years moved along from its inception in the 1900s, when the dwelling was constructed, the entire parcel became one large merged parcel at about 10,500 square feet. So what we're asking the Zoning Board of Appeals to allow us to do this evening is to separate this lot into two building lots, one containing the existing single-family home, which again is a very old CMU constructed dwelling around circa 1900 time with an existing Batumanish driveway to its north, and allow for the creation of a second lot, Lot B, which would then be constructed with a single-family dwelling with a modified driveway. I did get a chance to review the comments from Jared at the DPD, and I did try to take into consideration his concern with the driveway location and the type of dwelling we were constructing. So I recently, as early as today, and I'm not sure if you folks have had the opportunity to see this, but I've proposed a, what I feel is a better in-kind dwelling for the neighborhood with a covered porch in the front and a driveway that runs just along the east of it that would allow two stacked vehicles to enter onto the parcel and park legally. In addition, Mr. Alves had pointed out that two somewhat larger mature trees are going to be required to be removed for the installation of that second dwelling on Lot B, and as a result, had suggested us to install some mitigation trees. And again, I've shown that on the revised plan. We are providing four three-inch or greater caliber trees as mitigation for the removal of the two large mature trees that are centrally located on the lot. In addition to that, we've provided what we believe is is a layout that is in kind with the neighborhood, that does meet the overall definition of what the zoning is trying to do on the parcel. Ms. Alves was nice enough to do my job for me, I feel, as he provided a breakdown of the lots analyzed in the neighborhood and identified that the two lots that we're trying to create here fall pretty much above the median average of the frontage, the setbacks, as well as the area for all the lots. And he did provide us a somewhat of an image with a graph showing colored properties, 14 comparison sites to create that graph. Ultimately, our goal here is to to stay in kind with the neighborhood. We believe that the hardship here was that this property, albeit was three separate properties previously because of the zoning, had merged into one single-family property, and we felt as though that there was enough hardship here to allow us to move forward with a separate dwelling as long as we kept it in kind with the neighborhood. Now, the one thing I do want to point out to you folks, this is a two-two, yeah, a traditional two-family zone area, and by right, we can add on to this dwelling, but we felt as though as adding on another unit and just attaching it to the one family would not be in kind with the neighborhood, and we felt that the Zoning Board of Appeals would appreciate us coming in to try and keep this neighborhood as consistent as possible. And we do agree with all of the conditions that we have read through in the memo provided by Mr. Alves. And, you know, if there are any questions at this time, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Laniya. Thank you very much. Like to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board? Sean?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Laniya, for providing that up, those updated plans. I just actually just pulled them up. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I had some feedback in the background there. So I just had a couple of questions here. I noticed on the the new lot that's being proposed, there are a couple sheds in the back back area, presume that are with the original property. What is the intention with regards to those sheds?
The intention's to keep the sheds as they are. I do not believe there was any intention on the applicant to have them removed or modified. I actually went in one of them today. It's not in bad shape. They're not in disrepair, so the intent would be to probably keep them as they are.
Okay. And I presume they're just going to be dedicated to the to the new lot, correct? They're not going to be shared between two properties?
That is correct. They would be solely of the ownership of Lot B. They would go with the sale of the property and ultimately become part of the new owner's dwelling.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, I like the package. I like the idea of what's, I went by the property. This is my old childhood neighborhood, familiar with the area. The house on Seneca Street is in very bad disarray, really needs some, really needs some upgrades. It's very exciting to see that that happened with that house. And it is, I agree with you, it's correct. I believe that, I think it would be better to have another, have a lot on another property, another first single-family on the property, the other lot, which is. So I, I say, I think it's a great project. Again, another great package you put together, Ms. Laniya. I would be in full support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Mr. Brier, please.
He was on mute, but I just requested to unmute him.
Come back to him. Why don't we go to Dennis?
Oh, I think he's back now.
Oh, like that. Mr. Brier?
Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we can. Thank you, sir.
Mark Brier speaking. I'm very familiar with this property as it happens to be the neighborhood in which I reside. This is a structure that has been vacant for years. It's been vandalized many times, and the adjacent lot to it is rather overgrown and unkept. It's, the neighborhood welcomes the investor who will come in and revitalize this property. I think it will fit the neighborhood character very, very neatly, and I look forward to the construction and the improvement that it will be to the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with my colleagues that it would be a nice fit for that neighborhood. I'd like to hear more about the intent with the existing structure. Is it the intent that that structure would be preserved and restored? And is that part of the renovations with or the construction of the new house? Do they go hand in hand? Or is it sold off to else to develop later on?
So currently, they're going to go hand in hand. The intention is to get started right away on the interior dwelling work. Obviously, the money that's associated from the financiers is contingent upon the approval of the lot. So what we're trying to do is we do the ZBA portion first, then we go for the big package of the funds, and then we're allowed to get started in that single-family house doing the work. But that is our anticipation to start right away on that as we're working towards the development of the second lot, Mr. McCarthy.
Fran, would it be possible to condition if my fellow board members would agree with me that the existing structure would be renovated in conjunction with the construction of the proposed new single-family?
I'm not familiar with any conditions like that. I'm not sure if any other board member has has conditioned that before, but I'm honestly not sure.
The reason I bring it up is I know a number of years ago, we granted variances for the site on the corner of Wood Street and Westford Street, I think, or not, Westford Street, Westford Street and Wood Street, where it was developed into three different properties. There was an existing house there, and then two other properties were developed. The existing house has never been renovated and is falling apart, and it's a number of years later. And so I fear that this could possibly fall into that category where unless it's conditioned that it takes place, that we could just be excited about selling and developing that new house and the existing house continues to be an eyesore for the neighborhood. So I'd like to see a condition if we could, that the that the work happens for both sites. And not only are we subdividing the lot, but we're also requiring that the existing property get redeveloped. That said, I don't have drawings that state what we're, so we have a site plan prior to one that was presented today that basically gives us a two-story building with a roughly 2,200 square foot potential box. There's no indication as to what you're doing with the roof line, what you're doing with number of bedrooms, what you're doing with, again, an outdoor patio, even the front walkway isn't indicated. So my, I mean, this is something that we had again two weeks ago on the other site where we didn't have documents to understand exactly your intent. It wasn't fleshed out, although the revised site plan seems to be heading that direction. So are there building elevations and floor plans that support that revised site plan?
For the proposed dwelling, Mr. McCarthy, there are. For the existing dwelling, I do not have any interior drawings for that structure. And I did provide the house, the structures again, but it was late, so you might not have them, but they were provided as of today.
I don't know if we do have them, Fran, but I don't see them posted online.
They are more than likely not.
Okay, so.
So sorry, I did send them via email, but I didn't have time to upload them. So they're not on the website, but I in the 11th hour forwarded them, I believe.
Was it just the site plan or were the floor elevations supporting that? They just have a site plan?
Yes, I only forwarded the site plan, you're right. So I don't think I was.
Well, in any event, I think it'd be helpful to have the intent on the existing building as well, because again, that second story could be removed and you could be putting four bedrooms up there and then you have a five-bedroom house. And I just want to understand what the intent is before we, before I feel comfortable with going forward. And plus, these are prerequisites that are required in your list that you had even submitted as part of the package, that you provide numbers of spaces and square footages and that kind of thing and elevation, correct?
Absolutely, Mr. McCarthy. And again, as I stated, we did provide the proposed dwelling units, so you have those already that you can look at and take a look at prior to the next meeting, but we will have to get you something on that existing dwelling. And again, you know, our intent is to develop these together, well, at least ongoing as they're going together, but, you know, ultimately, I'm not sure what the interior of that structure's going to look like as of yet, so I'd have to get back to you on that, Mr. McCarthy.
It wouldn't be just the interior, but I just want to understand what renovations are going to take place. Are you taking the roof off? Are you doing a new second floor that includes, you know, whatever? So we just want to understand that structure, I do at least, what the intent is going forward because before it turns into a, you know, 3,000 square foot structure, I'd just like to know that that's what we approved, right?
Yes, sir.
And then you're not providing landscaping for that site. You're providing some trees for the proposed, but you're not showing what you're doing on the other site. Is there a reason for that?
The other site's fairly well landscaped, albeit it's overgrown, so I would anticipate that we'd work with the existing vegetation that's there now. There's going to be no tree removal required to get that house up and running. You know, no exterior changes really to that house that I know of that are beyond, you know, paint, new windows and that type of stuff. I don't believe that there's any roof raising. I just currently can't speak to what that interior of the house looks like, Mr. McCarthy, because I've never been in it. So I'm not sure. But there is no, I don't think there's any anticipation to increase the number of bedrooms. It would stay the same single-family home. It's a CMU house, so really, like I said, no exterior structural changes. They're not raising the roof. I think more importantly, they're just going to clean it up. It's got a nice set of bushes in front of the dwelling that are already there and along the eastern side. I think that just really needed to be cleaned up, and there is one massive tree to the north of the existing Batumanish driveway that's going to remain. So I don't think there's really much more for landscaping that's going to be done more than just cleaning that place up and giving it back some life that it probably hasn't had for quite some time.
You don't indicate that in the plan as far as what existing landscaping is there. So we don't have a document that identifies what you intend to keep.
Okay.
Is it possible to add? Okay. All right. I will say, I visited the site and I agree with Mark that this is a shame that this existing structure is so badly vandalized and in tough shape, and it would be tremendous to see it restored in such a nice neighborhood. And I think that the second house is very reasonable in scale and square footage from the site plan, but again, without knowing your intent with massing, I don't know what the walls look like, elevations. I don't understand what the layout is if you've got a four or five-bedroom house again or, you know, so I just would like to have that detail as required by the prerequisites anyway to complete the package so that I would have what we're approving.
Absolutely, sir.
It continued so that we could get that information to satisfy the prerequisites, but I do like the project. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. George?
I did drive by the property as well, and it does look like it's probably the last one. one that needs to be done, the last of the Mohicans over there. Glad to know that Mark, you know, is in that neighborhood and he's happy to see that, you know, that will make the neighborhood look beautiful. So I'm on board. I think it would be a good project, but I also think, as Mark, I'm sorry, as Dennis mentioned, you'd like to see, you know, what's going on with the other portion.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Mr. Lanier, I think, to me, this project makes sense. The site itself, the property is, as my colleagues have said, in disarray. So subdividing and making another property and kind of beautifying that site actually fits online very much with the neighborhood of the character. I also agree with my colleagues in terms of getting the proper documentation and requirements and prerequisites. As you're aware, you know, these are kind of the minimum guidelines we need
Absolutely.
to make sure things are done, you know, in the proper way. And it benefits not just like the neighborhood, but you, the city, everyone involved.
Absolutely, 100% Mr. Pack.
Aside from like kind of the prerequisites of the documentation, I think this is a project that I would support, I think anyone would support. So aside from, you know, just getting the renovation and the actual plans with the inside, I do agree that I would support this project. So those are my thoughts and comments on this, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Fran. So, Mr. Lanier, I think, in the wish of the board, I think we're all suited to continue this, so you can
Absolutely.
get those documents in order. I'm sure they'll be very timely.
Absolutely, yes, sir. I'll make sure they're there to you guys by the end of the week.
Oh, thank you so much. And Fran, can you give us a date for the next available?
Yes, the next meeting is...
The 28th?
The 28th, yes.
Does that work for you, Mr. Lanier?
That works, yes, sir.
Okay. That being said, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2020-32 for 62 Seneca Street and 33 Triple S Street to continue the public hearing of this matter to September 28, 2020.
May I have a second?
Mr. McCarthy would like to second the motion.
May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Continue to September 28, 2020.
Member Pack?
Approve continuance.
Member Callahan?
Continue to September 28, 2020.
Member McCarthy?
Approve continuance to September 20...
Member Briere?
Approve continuance.
Member Proco?
Approve continuance, September 28.
Hey, Mr. Lanier, thank you very much.
Excellent.
We'll continue till the 28th, and we'll look forward to finalizing your package then.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You guys have a great evening.
Thank you, you too.
You too.
All right. Moving forward on the new business, we have ZB 2020-33 for variance, Joseph Clamont and Karen Jason Clamont. At 234 Crawford Street, Section 5.1, Jason and Clamont is seeking variance approval to construct, to reconstruct and expand a rear porch at 234 Crawford Street. The property is in a traditional neighborhood, single-family TSF zoning district. The proposal requires variance approval in Section 5.1 to exceed the maximum allowed floor area ratio, FAI, for any other relief required on a low zoning area. Good evening, Counselor, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you. For the record, Attorney Joe Clamont representing Jason Clamont and Diana Clamont, they're the owners of the property at 234 Crawford Street. And we're here before you are requesting a variance to exceed the maximum floor area ratio to reconstruct and expand a rear porch. The subject property is a single-family home, 8,496 square feet in the TSF zone. The property is very consistent with the neighborhood. Now, the rear porch, which cannot be seen from the street, is currently nine by 10, 90 square feet. The applicant would like to reconstruct that porch to 12 by 15, total of 180 square feet, 90 square foot increase. That would increase the FAR from point four, I'm sorry, would increase the FAR from point four-two to point four-three. I know the application said point four-five, but that was an error. Apparently, the increase is only to point four-three that's necessary, the 90 square feet. The staff memo noted that 71% of the properties in this area do exceed the FAR, and the median FAR is point four-seven. So even with this addition, the property would have a smaller FAR than 60% of the homes in that area. Now, all of the dimensional requirements are met and will remain to be met. We believe the desired relief can be granted without detriment to the public good. The intent of the zoning can be met without substantial derogation. So given the de minimis request here, we're requesting approval of the variance to allow construction as per the plan submitted. I had submitted some photographs of the property to the board and some also examples of the work that would be going on if the board had any questions. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor, I appreciate that. That being said, I'd like to open up to the board, strike that, open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up the board, Dennis?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions, but I agree with Counselor that this is a de minimis request. I like the use of that word.
It's a great word.
I, you know, if I were rebuilding a porch, I certainly would try to go 12 by 15, which would be the better dimension by far versus nine by 10. So I think your restraint to not do something overpowering is great, and I think that the application makes a lot of sense. I just love the document that we have on file here from Jared about the FARs in the neighborhood. It's so useful right now for us to see and help us, guide us with these processes going forward. And I think this is very reasonable to do. It almost seems like it's something that you shouldn't have to come in front of. There should be a gray area, I think, to raise, you know, it's such a small amount. But in any event, I completely support this, and I think that the restraint shown by the applicant with the size that they're asking for should be commended. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Mark?
Mr. Chairman, Mark Brier speaking. Am I heard, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, thank you, Mark. Go ahead.
Okay, I believe the request is more than reasonable and as a result, will greatly enhance the property. Best of luck. I'm certainly in favor of this petition. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. I think it would be conducive to the neighborhood, the expansion. It doesn't look like it would affect the driveway as you look or off-street parking. So I think it's, I think it's a good project.
Thank you, George. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I also agree with my colleagues, you know, minimal relief asked for, and obviously, this would be a great addition, a great, not just to the house, but to the neighborhood as a whole. And to me, I also agree with Mr. McCarthy's comment. This is something I feel like, you know, that could be done kind of in-house, in department through the city, but, you know, I'd have to go through this permitting process, which is fine. But like I said, minimal relief, so, you know, I think it's, I think it makes total sense. So I wish Mr. Clamont the best of luck. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Sean?
Thank you, through, Mr. Chairman. I agree with all my fellow board members that this is really the nature attachment of the neighborhood. Thank you again for sending over the renderings, Attorney Clamont. So we've got a better understanding of how it's laid out, but it looks like it's been laid out very well. I wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. That being said, any other comments this time? I do agree with the board, I think this petition makes sense. Agree with Mr. McCarthy. Kudos to Counselor Clamont and his client for being reasonable in their request and understanding, you know, how zoning works and community works, and it bodes well for your professional character, sir, and we appreciate that. That being said, like to have a motion.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2020-33 for 234 Crawford Street for variance approval under Section 5.1 to exceed the maximum floor area ratio to reconstruct and expand a rear porch and construct an adjacent section.
May I have a second?
This is Van Pack, and I second the motion.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member Pack?
Approve.
Member Callahan?
Approve.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Member Briere?
Approve.
Member Proco?
Approved.
Counselor, you've unanimously approved. We wish you the best of luck and many positive, healthy cookouts over on...
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the board. I'd also like to thank staff, as always with these applications, that their assistance is invaluable, very helpful with the feedback we get from them. So we appreciate all the hard work they put into these applications. So thank you very much.
Thank you kindly, Counselor, and I agree, we have a wonderful DPD staff. Their youth and vibrancy is very welcomed in the city, and we appreciate your kind words.
Thank you. Have a good night.
If we have five, we're going to move on to new business. We have ZB 2020-34 for variances, John C. Gary, Care of Monte Castle LLC at 15 Canton Street, Section 5.1 and Section 6.1, Monte Castle LLC, seek advance approval to convert an existing single-family residence into a two-family residence at 15 Canton Street. The property is in traditional two-family TTF zoning district. The conversion requires variance under Section 5.1 for the minimum side yard setback, minimum front yard setback, and minimum frontage under Section 6.1, a relief from off-street parking requirements for any other relief required on a low zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor, how are you?
Good to see you all. For the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary, 32 Church Street, Wall, Mass. I'm here tonight representing Leo Montero, who is the principal of Monte Castle LLC. Leo is also the applicant and the owner of 15 Canton Street, the subject property tonight. So as the chairman mentioned, we're here tonight requesting variances to convert the existing single-family structure to a two-family dwelling. And as a result of that conversion, we are also requesting some dimensional relief pursuant to 5.1, which was indicated in the zoning chart attached to the ZBA plan. But specifically, the relief we're looking for is for minimum side yard setback, minimum frontage, and minimum front yard setback. We are also seeking relief pursuant to 6.1 relative to off-street parking requirements for this petition. The site's located in the TTF zoning district and presently consists of about 8,526 square feet of land with a large carriage house on the property. The property was most recently used as a single-family home, but that was probably about a decade or so ago. It's been vacant and unkept since then. So for the board's review, I've included a site plan, elevation and floor plans, as well as renderings of the property both before and after my client's proposed rehab of the property. The existing structure consists of about 4,000 square feet of gross living space. The applicant is proposing to convert the structure from a single-family to a two-family, as I mentioned. Unit one, which would be the left side of the property, would consist of about 1,661 square feet of living space with two bedrooms and two and a half baths. Unit two, the right side of the property, would consist of 1,071 square feet of living space with two bedrooms and two baths. The parking requirements for this proposal would require the applicant to have four off-street parking spaces. We currently have two-dimensionally compliant off-street parking spaces to the right side of the building. We have a non-compliant parking space to the left side of the property, and we would be requesting relief for the non-compliant space and relief for one additional parking space that we do not provide. My client, if you're familiar with the property at 1180 Middlesex Street, if you recall, we were before this board a few months back requesting a conversion of a four-family structure to a six-family structure. The board approved that petition, and my client has gone through that property from top to bottom. It's just about complete. He's done a spectacular job with it, and he's getting ready to start to lease those units. While he was doing that, he, you know, this carriage house was on the market. He approached the owner, and he negotiated a deal to purchase it. It makes sense that this carriage house is rehabbed in the, consistent with what was done with the, with the lodge structure on 1180 Middlesex Street. The client anticipates spending about $150,000 on rehab of this property in addition to what he has paid to purchase the property. So the client is with me tonight, Leo Montero is with me tonight. Due to the hardship is created due to the size, location of the lot, we respectfully request the relief from the board. We do feel that the, there's no derogation to the current zoning, and we fit with the character of the neighborhood. As I said, the current zoning is traditional two-family. We are proposing a two-family structure, and we respectfully request the approval here. Happy to answer any questions or concerns, and as I mentioned, my client is with us remotely as well.
Thank you, Counselor, appreciate that. That being said, like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor?
Um, excuse me. I actually got an email from a neighbor who said that she was not able to join the meeting, so I can read that into the record now.
Oh, please do. Thank you, Fran.
So she said, "We're having difficulty joining the meeting tonight. That being said, we, Douglas Pellegrino and I, Deborah Vervett, wish to comment on 15 Canton Street on tonight's agenda. Both Douglas and myself are totally for an application being discussed tonight on converting 15 Canton Street into a two-family residence from a single-family home. We live across the street at the corner of Canton and Middlesex Streets. We have watched the phenomenal job he has done on the 1180 Middlesex Street property and anticipate the same to be done on the original carriage house, AKA 15 Canton Street. Again, we are for this project."
Thank you, and we appreciate citizens sending that in today in favor of this. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board, Mark?
Mr. Chairman, Mark Brier.
Thank you.
I think it's, I think it's important to note that in reviewing the comments on the planning department, that the, that the Development Services Department, Building Department, and the Fire Department all had no issues with this project. Additionally, they complimented this developer's professional reputation and personal character. I look forward to this property being revitalized, and as a result, I confidently favor this petition.
Thank you, Mark. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, to me, this petition makes sense. I think in terms of all the relief they need, the side yard setback, the frontage, the front yard setback, it's very minimal. It's all within six feet or under. And then the parking, the relief for parking, you know, off by one space. But overall, I think, you know, this project makes sense. So I think it falls in line with the multi-family, two-family zoning district it's in. So it's all right. I think, I think this project can be approved, and, you know, I have no issues. I wish the applicant the best of luck. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I echo Mark's comments here. This, this, too many times, I think we get a applicant... This, too many times, I think we get an applicant come before us where they're doing things that I think we kind of wish they had better talent on their team to come up with better solutions, but the fact that we have this very large lot in a two-family district and the building is 4,000 square feet, over 4,000 square feet, he's asking to make it a two-family, which makes so much sense, and he's not trying to put additional paving in the back of the house, of the building, to increase parking. He's asking for some relief on parking. It can possibly get two spaces on the street, I think, in front of the house as it stands. So, you know, with the two off-street spaces on the right and the one off-street space on the left, and then two on-street parking spaces, that's five spaces, one extra, if you will, if you count the street parking. So, I think the parking's an easy one. I think that the other criteria, just as Van mentioned, is minor in nature, and it's an existing building that we want to preserve, and that's what they're doing, and they're doing such a phenomenal job on the other structure on the corner of Middlesex and Canton, that I can own. And the package that was presented with the before rendering, after rendering, all the documents, and the units themselves are spectacular units with laundry, I mean, it's just amazing. I think that the quality level and the product that we're being asked for, the variance, to me, is an easy thing to grant on all counts, the parking and the dimensional characteristics. So, I completely support it and am glad that the applicant is finding the city worthy of investing and putting his talents in, because we certainly are, and I'm glad to see this product here in this location. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. George?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo colleagues' comments. I drove around, you know, that neighborhood as well, and, you know, seeing that it looks like that's the only single-family that's on that street, so it makes perfect sense to, you know, to try to make it into a two-family. It sounds like the applicant, you know, has a very good reputation, so I would be on board just based on the fact that, you know, that the board is aware of him and knows his integrity, so I think it would be a good project.
Thank you, George. Sean?
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I share the same sentiments with my fellow colleagues. I think this is going to be absolutely a great project. I like how the layout of the two units are set forth. One question I did have, though, Attorney Gary, I'm looking at the second unit. On the renderings, there's a section on the front end of the building, a loft, but I don't see any stairs going up to a loft, or is that just like an open hallway area? Leo, can you answer that question?
Yes, it is just an open loft. It's on the same level as the second floor. It's not a walk-up loft.
Okay. No, no, I was like, I was looking at that as like loft, and thinking if it was an upper loft that had stairs going up to, that would probably be used as a, like, extra, you know, office space or some sort of thing that would, which I would have been like, oh, that's like a great way to put, no, great way to utilize that space. But that's okay.
Right. It's a flexible, open space, you know, we'll present it that way, where that happens because of the dormer in the front, so that's where that loft is, is right by that dormer, if you look at the renderings.
Okay. No, but I was just like trying to picture it in my mind if there was an upper loft area that you had an extra office space that you could put in with, you know, that someone could just go up there and like, you know, like people work, like now that people, a lot more people are going to be telecommuting from home, it'd be great for a person to have like an office. That would have been, that just seemed like a good setup, which I thought it was. That's okay. But I mean, I'm still fascinated. I think it's just, I think it's a great repurposing, a great way to lay out the building, and I think it's a great project, and I wish the applicant the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you.
So, Counselor, we appreciate your preparedness in getting in front of the comments and, you know, detailed explaining the project. Mr. Montero, I can definitely agree with my colleagues on the board, as well as others within the city, city departments, residents, not only of the Highlands but of the rest of the city. I have personally received many positive comments on the work you're doing over in that neighborhood and the appreciation that the neighbors have and the neighborhood groups have. Your commitment and your professionalism to the city is something that we take pride in having builders and developers in partnership with us in the city, and you're a true testament of what our city is all about in our community. And I just wanted, for the record, for you to know that I have personally taken at least 11 phone calls in positive feedback in relation to this project, and then people are counter positive production on your other projects, so I felt it important for that to be noted. That being said, is there any other comments of the board?
I just have one comment, Mr. Chairman. The comments from the DPD, we were asked to consider the fact that we're missing a landscape plan, and we may want to add as a condition that the applicant provide a landscape plan that includes the size and species and quantity of proposed plantings, especially for the front of the home along Canton Street, just so that we are clear as to what we're providing for the neighborhood.
I agree with that, Counselor.
Yes, that would be acceptable.
For a landscape plan?
Yes, that would be acceptable to the developer.
I'm in a little bit of my internet. Thank you, Counselor. Okay, I got that. Okay, any other comments by the board? That being said, Mr. Clark, may I have a motion, please?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2020-34 for 15 Canton Street for variance approval under section 5.1 for minimum side yard setback, minimum front yard setback, minimum frontage, in section 6.1 for off-street parking to convert an existing single-family residential building into a two-family residence with the condition that the applicant will work with DPD on a landscape plan.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approval condition?
Member Pekk.
Approve with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approve with condition.
Member Brier?
Approve with conditions.
Member Proko?
Approve with conditions.
Counselor and Mr. Montero, you've been unanimously approved. We wish you the best of luck in the project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Montero. Best of luck, sir.
Thank you.
Moving forward on to new business, ZB 2020-35 for variance, John C. Gary, Care Beth and Gilberti at 151 Remington Street, section 5.1. Beth and Gilberti is seeking variance approval to construct an addition on the existing single-family home at 151 Remington Street. The property is suburban, single SSF zoning district. The proposal requires variance approval under section 5.1 to exceed the maximum floor area ratio, FAR, and for any other relief required on Lowell zoning. Evening, Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Again, my name for the record is John Gary, Gary &amp; Gary, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing Beth Gilberti, the owner of 151 Remington Street. Also with us tonight is Beth's husband Frank and their contractor Jay Stamp of Stamp &amp; Sons Construction. So, 151 Remington Street is located in the suburban, single-family zoning district. The lot consists of 8,405 square feet of land and has a fairly small three-bedroom ranch on it. I provided for the board's review the proposed floor and elevation plans, the site plan, which I actually has been revised two or three times, so you should have the most recent site plan showing the driveway added to the plan. And then we also provided several letters of support from the Butters. So, we're requesting relief pursuant to 5.1 of the zoning bylaws for the floor area ratio. The existing floor area ratio is 0.26%. The district, the SSF district, requires 0.35%. The proposed addition, which in this case will be a fairly large two-car garage with a master suite above it, so the first floor will consist of the two-car garage, and then the transition area from the addition to the existing living space will include a mudroom and a half bath. The master bedroom will include the master bath and a walk-in closet. Although the relief that we're requesting is fairly significant for the floor area ratio, the proposed addition fits in with the neighborhood. There are several homes much larger than this home in the neighborhood, and there are some smaller. Ultimately, the addition will fit in nicely with the neighborhood. Beth, by way of background, Beth has lived in the neighborhood her entire life. She bought this home several years ago. Her husband Frank is a firefighter from Medford who relocated to Lowell when he met Beth. He has bought into the city. He loves the city, loves living here, and they want to continue to raise their family in this home for years to come. They have spoken with several neighbors, and they have received positive feedback from all. Ultimately, in granting the variance, there's no substantial detriment to the public good. In fact, the proposed addition will enhance the neighborhood, and by granting the requested relief, the board would not be nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent of the zoning. So, we're happy to answer any questions that the board members may have, and we respectfully request your approval.
Thank you, Counselor, and to your point, we did receive letters of support on, from Remington Street, address 130, 150, and 157, and adjacent Morningside Drive, 17, 12, and 27, all in support of this project, 151 for public record. That being said, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public area is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public area is now closed. Like to open up to the board, Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, overall, I think, you know, it is a kind of substantial increase in their property, and I totally get the addition, the two-car garage, the living space and all that, but I also believe that it's done in a very moderate way, still in line with the neighborhood, the character, and the intent of zoning. Why I do, I do agree that, you know, the property would be enhanced greatly by this renovation, it would also enhance the whole neighborhood and the city, and that the city as a whole. You know, I know the FAR is very, you know, asking for quite a bit of relief, but I, you know, I also think that the owners or the applicant, you know, they did the due diligence. They talked to the neighbors, the Butters. You know, we have a slew of supporters, I think half a dozen lovers of supporters, and I didn't hear or see anything of anyone against this project. So, overall, while I do think they're asking for a lot of relief, I think they're really ready to invest in the city and the home, so I'm in favor of this, Mr. Chairman, so I, you know, I wish him the best of luck. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I believe you've finished. Last.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Move on to Dennis.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Van that, again, the street face of the structure really is...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dennis.
Is kept, I'm sorry. Is that all right?
No, go ahead, Dennis. Yeah, I appreciate it, Mr. Pekk, Mr. McCarthy, thank you. Sorry for the interruption with the internet.
No worries.
Maybe Comcast can help me out over here. I went without and give me a better signal. Just checking.
Okay. I think what Van was suggesting is that the FAR makes sense in this neighborhood, especially the way this addition is set up. I believe the narrative calls it a 31-by-41 two-car garage. It's actually 24-by-41. It's actually a little bit smaller in the dimension, but the fact that it extends in the rear of the site and is set back to the sidelines, property lines, it's really well done. I think, again, the restraint of the applicant to really not try to do a large mass on the street, but leave the existing home as it is and just change the roof elements, I think, bodes well for preserving the neighborhood, and not only that, but enhancing it as we go forward into 2021. I do see, though, that in the applicant, that we don't have the height identified. None of the documents, even though we have probably the best application I've ever seen, we don't have the existing building height identified, we don't have the proposed height identified. So, I'd like to have a condition that you provide the heights of the new construction, just so that we, I believe it'll fit within zoning, I don't see it as a problem, but I just think we need to document it somewhere. But I think, again, our document that we got from Jared back in July last year, where we really kind of have an overview of the FARs and where this always seems to come up and what we are kind of looking at as a whole for FARs in the city, this fits in with something that I think should be given a variance. So, I think that I'd like to support this, and I really don't have anything else except that height that's missing as a condition, so.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. I can tell you that the existing height is, mean-to-mean is 14 feet, peak-to-peak is 16 feet. The proposed mean-to-mean is 23, and the peak-to-peak is 26, but we were happy to provide a revised plan showing that.
And zoning requirement, if I could?
35.
35, exactly, yeah. So, you're well within it. I just think we need a document that states that, in my opinion, just to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. George?
I hope to use this site plan when I come to the board for my variance.
What a great garage.
Very impressed. I actually don't have any comments. I thought this was beautifully set up. I think it's a wonderful plan, and I look forward to seeing the finished product.
Thank you, George. Mark?
Mr. Chairman, Mark Ruria. Very simply, the benefit and enhancement this petition provides the subject property and neighborhood as a whole far outweighs the moderate increase to the FAR, and as a result, I'm very confident we can grant the requested relief. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Sean?
Thank you, through, Mr. Chairman. I'm in agreement with all of my fellow board members, I mean, I think this is, as Van said, yeah, it's a lot of relief if it's requested, but it will fit in with the neighborhood all in all, and I think there would be benefits on adding the garages and getting cars out off the streets, as well as with the addition of the bedroom. I don't see any problems with that, too. I think it was a great, well-together put package and great thinking outside the box on trying to add all that. It's very impressive, very impressive setup, so wish the applicant the best of luck.
Thank you, Sean. I do want to echo the comments of Mr. McCarthy, and, you know, for the record, the work that DPD, led by Jared Els, in the request by Mr. McCarthy and his board to provide detailed information on FAR, has helped us. I can't even begin to say how that document and the requirements... I can't even begin to say how that document and the requirements and the resource we now have, that we didn't have for several years, makes these petitions more easily attainable, palatable, and it gives us a better understanding of what the FAR is really are about and to scope, to the point of Rob and on this particular project. I also will say that I know Beth and Gilberti is, I believe, fourth or fifth generation in the city of Lowell, coming from a great family and bringing her family here, staying here, bringing her husband Frank from the city of Medford to our city and raising their family. And this nice family neighborhood is another character of what we're all about. And you, Counselor Gary, your preparation and understanding of the zoning bylaws are greatly appreciated and how well-prepared you are. So we do have that one condition from a memorandum of understanding on the height, although it's been barely discussed here. Are you in agreeance with that, sir?
We are. We are happy to provide that information.
Great, thank you very much. That being said, may I have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to verify with Fran. It looks like, at least, we posted that the only things sought are variances on the ZB FAR, but looking at the updated site plan, I do see that there was some other relief that needed to, minor relief requested. We're going to include that as well in the, we include that as well in the vote?
Yes. Could you remind me of the other relief?
Yeah, so we posted just for the FAR, but looking at the updated site plan, I see that there's relief sought for minimum loft size, frontage, minimum front yard, minimum side yard. Attorney Gary, can you, is that correct?
That's correct, and all of which were pre-existing. So the addition is all conforming.
Okay, so you don't need relief on any of that stuff, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so I guess it's just for the FAR. I just want to double check. Okay, so with that, through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2020-35 for 151 Remington Street for variance approval under Section 5.1 to exceed minimum maximum floor area ratio to construct an addition on an existing single-family residential building with the condition that the applicant is to provide revised site plans showing the heights of the construction. Chairman frozen again?
Think so.
We got to get Comcast over there.
Yeah, they... Thank you. We better get some trucks on the road, I'm telling you now.
I think Dan seconded it.
We have a second by Mr. Peck. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin.
Approval condition.
Member PAC.
Approved with conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approved with conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approved with condition.
Member Briere.
Approved with conditions.
Member ProCo.
Approved with conditions.
Well, Counselor and Gilberti family unanimously approve. We wish you the best of luck and many, many years of happiness in your new property.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Have a good evening. Moving forward under other business, we have minutes for approval for August 24, 2020. Any comments, revisions, deletions by the board? None being noted. May I have a motion for acceptance of these meetings, Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for August 24, 2020.
May I have a second?
A second?
May I have a roll call? Roll call, please.
It's just for...
Sorry. Chairman Perrin.
Accepted minutes.
Member PAC.
Approved with minutes.
Member Callahan.
Approved minutes for August 24, 2020.
Member McCarthy.
Approved with minutes for August 24.
Member Briere.
Approved.
Member ProCo.
Approved minutes for 24th.
Yeah, that being said, I just want to take one quick minute. I want to take this opportunity to apologize to my fellow board members and to the citizens of the city of Lowell for my transgressions, missing the last meeting. It totally slipped my mind in calendar and that I believe is my first in 12 years, but it is my duty and obligation to uphold the quorum and I felt it important to make that known. And I also want to take this time publicly to welcome aboard George as a new member of our board. It's nice to see our seats filling up. I believe that we are almost there, but you're a welcome addition, sir. We look forward to your time on the board, serving the city and working with us, and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns of the board?
Mr. Chairman, this is Van Peck. I just want to echo your sentiments, sir, about Mr. ProCo. I welcome him to the board and I wish him the very best of luck as well as we go forward, working together.
Thank you, Mr. Peck.
Mr. Chairman, George is a pro at this now. It's been, what, three, this is like a third, a second or third meeting?
That's good.
I welcome, but he's obviously welcome, so I mean, congratulations again on that. Now your second, your second second on minutes.
There you go. Congratulations. Any other comments or concerns at this time?
I'd just like to see George, when he shows up at City Hall, if he's going to wear a bowtie, because, you know, that's going to cement the relationship. If he comes in with the bowtie, he's got it. He's nailed it. Thank you, George.
Noted as a condition by longstanding member, Mr. McCarthy.
Oh, boy.
All right, gentlemen. Fran, I appreciate your timeliness tonight and your help. As always, I wish everyone continued health and safety during this unprecedented time. Make a motion for an adjournment.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
I believe Comcast is knocking on my door.
Dennis seconded it.
Let's go. Done. Thank you, Fran.
Have a nice night, everyone.
I have a second for closure of the meeting.
Dennis seconded it.
Yeah, did.
Have a good night. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Nice.
Night, everyone.
Good night.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone.